Cul-de-sac length for Streets D and E to exceed 500 feet as shown on the general plan.
Second.
You heard the motion, the second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Planning Commission approve the general plan for the Creekside condominium planned unit development, subject to the five staff conditions.
Second.
Heard the motion, the second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you for coming. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. All right, moving on, I'm going to skip around on the agenda a little bit. The next item will be the conditional zoning certificate and site plan for extra storage, public storage facility, city lot 6859 Quadrille Drive in the I-2 Heavy Industrial District. We need to set a public hearing. Mr. Kaiser?
Okay, yeah, we have a application for conditional zoning certificate as well as plans for a public storage facility development on Quadrille Drive. The site in question, just one south of Greenwich Road there, if I can get that, it's probably one of the last undeveloped sites on the street. I believe there is some to the south, but that's owned, I believe, by Suprema that could be used for future expansion. So, right now, to date, we have received completed application and fee, the plans, statement of compliance with the conditional zoning certificate, as well as floor plans and draft building elevations, and plans for landscaping, site lighting, and signage. That's something can be addressed at a later date with the AGC as well as engineering. So, this is kind of a basic layout and configuration of the site. It looks like we'd have about six buildings in total. Let me move down one. This is the utility plan. It doesn't show up very well on the screen. On your plans, a little bit more. Applicants will be bringing water in. We have a proposed hydrant here, this general area. There's one also down here, and that one also said proposed. Looks like there is also an existing water line within an easement. Whether they're going to have to extend that and cap it with a hydrant, I think that's the plan. But these have been sent out for comment from the various agencies, which we'll have back before the hearing. I would just note that we've met with the developer several times since last April regarding this proposal. There were a number of issues involved, one of them being that as, you know, under current site conditions, basically half of the site was within the detention basin. So, they worked with an engineer to kind of reconfigure that. I think this plan shows this darker line right here, I think, was the high watermark of the basin. So, it really would have knocked out a lot of that development. Working with an engineer and with our engineering department, they've come up with a way to reconfigure that. Also, our repair and regulations changed, which benefits developments like these. So, it opened up the land to make this possible. So, with that in mind, I think we are set to have a public hearing on this particular project. So, our next meeting is scheduled for Monday, February 24th. I think we could have this slightly early meeting if they're going to meet, and we would have the public hearing at 6:00.
Any other questions for Mr. Kaiser? Is there anyone in the audience representing this project? Your name and address for the record, please.
My name's A.J. Jackson with Extra Storage, 7163 Beach Road, Wadsworth, Ohio, 44281. Any questions for me you guys have?
Well, I guess we'll find out at the public.
Yep. We're excited to get this going. I think it's going to be a nice, much-needed space for a lot of residents around here that, a lot of these, especially new developments like that going in, they don't have a lot of extra space to store any motor vehicles, motorhomes, buses, boats, anything like that. So, this will be a big space for them.
So, these will be fairly large units?
Yes, these units are 20-foot by 50-foot wide units. Yes, sir.
Or mechanized.
Yep, yep, yeah. Extra-large storage, extra storage. Yep, yes, sir.
Not kitchenware?
No, yeah. Yep.
Okay.
Awesome.
Very good.
Thank you, guys.
All right, we'll see you in a couple of weeks. All right, we need a motion to set the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Planning Commission set a public hearing for the extra storage conditional certificate of zoning certificate for Monday, February 24th, 2025, at 6:00 p.m. in council chambers.
Second.
You've heard the motion, the second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next item is a replat survey retracement?
Retracement. Did I spell it wrong?
Retracement and right-of-way dedication at 242 College Street, parts of city lots 122 and 126. Nancy Adams applicant, Air Force Residential District. Mr. Kaiser?
Okay, in this case, the owner applicant is in the process of selling this property. But the county wouldn't allow the title to transfer because there apparently are some errors between the existing plant and legal description of the property. So, what they're requesting is a resurvey or a retracement to basically make the plant match the legal descriptions, so that they can fix them both, so they match. But along with this, well, actually, as it stands now, the applicant's lot, which you can see here on the plant, exists of portions of two city lots. They would be consolidated into one new lot, and also the shaded area represents the College Street right-of-way. It was never dedicated, so it's still within a roadway easement. So, the plant will correct that. It dedicates 30 feet to the College Street public right-of-way. Looking at the tax maps earlier, it looks like one of the last missing pieces that didn't, in this area of town, that never got turned over. So, going to council, that'll be taken care of. This is not really unusual. The engineering department did review it. They had no significant findings. Just noted a few minor things that might have to be taken care of before the mylar are signed. Again, the retracements are required from time to time when there are discrepancies up at the county records. So, really, that's the main reason we have this before us. And I think it also will fix the undedicated street right-of-way issue. Again, probably an oversight from many, many years ago. So, with that in mind, I would recommend the commission approve the replat survey for the property with an address of 242 College with the two conditions as noted in the staff report.
All right, questions for Mr. Kaiser from the commission? Anybody here in the audience? Nope, there's only me here representing this.
Yeah, Louis Land was representing there. I forgot to tell you. Mr. Burgoon would have been here. He's at a meeting at the township trustee, and I said, "This is small enough."
Well, it seems very pretty straightforward. The humor of this struck me, is besides the city requiring to shovel the sidewalk, its owner should have been out shoveling the street.
I'd take care of it.
Since she owned it. Okay, I think we're ready for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a recommendation that the commission approve the survey retracement and right-of-way dedication for 242 College Street, R4 Residential District, Nancy Adams applicant.
Subject to the conditions?
Subject to the conditions, recommendations. Thank you.
Second.
You've heard the motion, the second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We're going down to the conditional consolidation, I'm sorry, consolidation and replat of city lots 5480, 5546, 6803, 604, 1100 High Street, CAM Development Application, C3 incentive, I can't stop tonight, intensive commercial district. Mr. Kaiser?
Okay. Basically, this is the Valley Detoeing Site. Back in September, we approved new development plans for the area, and those plans called for dividing the property into three new sites. Two are the north, the first one facing High Street to the north, unspecified use at this time. The south was proposed and approved for a Westfield Bank. And here, the southernmost lot, which has frontage on Smoke Rice Drive, was to be kind of an indoor two-story storage facility with some retail frontage along the east. And so, one of the conditions of approval would be, was that, okay, the applicant goes through the process to create the new lots. So, that's what's being done here. And in addition, back in October of 2024, applicant did go to the Board of Zoning Appeals to get a variance to the street frontage requirements for these two lots along High Street. Currently, the code requires 150-foot lot widths in the C3 district. Right now, the two lots from which this project was developed, they didn't even meet. They were like at 249 or 251. So, there was no way to practically separate, have two frontage lots on high each, which meant 150 feet. So, the BZI did grant that variance, and basically they've just kind of swapped the existing property line. They moved it from roughly this area where my cursor is and just up about 15, 20 feet. I don't remember. Not a big change, but the bank apparently, you know, needed a little bit more space, but really not all that much. So, really, at this point, there's just two outstanding issues from the September 24 conditions of approval that we're still waiting on, and it shouldn't affect commission's action tonight, but we would just hold the plat from being signed by the city engineer and releasing it until we get some copies of the, all the association bylaws, CCRs, the unit owner documents. Because if you recall, there's a lot of shared or cross-parking easements between the sites. The roadway system is designed to serve all three sites. We just want to make sure that those types of things are in place, also the restrictions and anything related to maintenance and how those are going to be shared and between the three lots. Obviously, we're looking to make sure that they don't say, "Hey, this is going to be city's responsibility." It's all private matter. And then finally, if you recall, the other big thing was that we have a fair amount of acreage north of this site that could be developed at some point in the future. Most of it will exit at Reimer and High, but we needed secondary means of ingress, egress. The applicant said, "I don't have a problem granting that," but we're working out terms of what they're to provide and what's going to happen. Mr. Morris is working on a development agreement that would ensure that this goes in with minor disruption to the tenants that are working there. And obviously, I believe the cost of all those improvements would be borne by the party that's going to develop the land to the north. So, once those two items are presented and reviewed, then I don't see any problem with getting this signed and released. Engineering department commented. I think they addressed the same things I did, also a few minor items that would be corrected or deleted from the final mylar. But in general, I think approval with the four conditions as noted in the staff report are appropriate. And again, once the two missing pieces are submitted, we're, we'd be ready to release this. And I don't believe that, yeah, I think there's a signature line for council, but since we're not dedicating any right-of-way, I think that's going to come off. So, really, once those issues are addressed, it can be released under the service director or city engineer's signature.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Kaiser?
Mr. Kaiser, did these lots fronting High Street flip?
Pardon me?
Did these lots fronting High Street flip? Look, I thought when we approved this before, they were different sizes.
They were. The lot to the north was smaller.
Okay, okay.
And the lot to the south was a little bit wider. Hold on one second. I might be able to pull up the era, because obviously, you haven't done anything, right? You just now own them. Okay. That's what I thought. So, let's see here. Okay, can we, can we see it now? I'm going to take the aerial off. So, right now, the properties that we're consolidating consist of this one, this one, this, and that. So... What is on that property now?
It's the fifth third.
Yeah, fifth third's there. This is a vacant piece just north of fifth third and south of the drive to Valley View. So, I can't remember what group owned that. I think they were out of Columbus. They've sold it to the developer.
Small parcels of Sowers family, larger parts of the Perry family, and some of their family members, more than the others, just the Perrys in this area, and the Leavens.
And these two were the Leavens.
Why didn't you join us at the podium?
Yeah, yeah. So, anyhow, so that's it. It just basically is going to take this configuration of these four parcels and create three out of them.
Okay, all right, all right. That's quite a memory. All right, any other questions for Mr. Kaiser?
Hi, my name is Jeffrey Mockbee. Address 1525 Corporate Woods Parkway in Green. One thing on the comments, that there really will not be CCRs as far as that goes. I believe Rob in my office had submitted you the Declaration of Easements.
Yes.
All the easements, there won't be restrictions as far as that goes. So, all the expenses and maintenance costs associated with all the easements, parking, landscape, utility, all that will be defined in the Declaration of Easements, which will be recorded subsequent to the plat, because we have to be able to put the parcel numbers on the Declaration of Easements. That way, every time the parcel is sold, it transfers right with it as far as the obligation versus having, there's no bylaws, there's nothing, there's really nothing common area otherwise that needs to be maintained. And since there's only three parcels that are ultimately being done, which we own all three, we'll be selling one parcel to the north of the bank, but otherwise, we own the balance of the site as far as that goes. I just wanted to clarify that.
And we do have those, and they'll be looked at. They're being looked at by the engineering department. If they're okay with that, if that meets the intent and it reverses those issues, then fine.
So, we could get rid of three?
And then what we'd have to do is then assign new lot numbers, which would then be added to that. You could then record that first and then turn around and then get the plat recorded after that.
Right, yeah.
Yeah. How does that affect condition three? That's where the CCRs are referenced.
Like I said, there would be no bylaws because there's no...
I would just leave it as is, because it, you know, if it's all handled through a Declaration of Easement, those things aren't necessary. So, I would just let it go.
Okay.
As long as you guys are fine with it, it works for me. And I know we've submitted back the development agreement, and we have no problem with the concept of doing. The biggest thing there comes down to is, no one knows what's going to happen on that site.
It'd be more difficult for us to do this.
Exactly.
Right, true.
Right.
That's no issue for you.
Yeah, no, it's, we don't know what ultimately would need to come through there. If it's just automobiles, it's a real easy thing, and I think we had a meeting where we kind of figured some traffic counts, anything above a certain traffic count, where if you have truck traffic, that needs to get out at the light, and they need a heavier pavement or a larger area where we have to relocate the stormwater basin and they put it on their property, that's all good. It's just a matter of, then if we're paying for something that we don't have any access to, if they're taking trucks out there, then would it be a feasible train transfer of that area? Those kind of things, which we wanted to put in the development agreement, just so everybody's on the same page.
Right, and I think that's the whole point. It's like, it could be one of several things. It could be an easement across their property that the new builder's going to have to build. If it's got something more heavy duty because more traffic's anticipated, if there's more than enough room that the applicant could sell them a 60-foot strip for a road right-of-way, which they would then improve, anything that would impact their existing basin would be handled through that and, you know, rebuilt either on their site or, again, it makes sense to share the stormwater between the sites. So, we're trying to come up with something that is strong enough to, you know, yeah, we know what we're going to do, generally speaking, but we're not going to know all the specifics until we see what, what comes in.
Right.
Okay, all right. So, the conditions as stated are acceptable. Conditions in the staff report are acceptable.
Yeah, I don't, we didn't see anything else. I mean, I think they're all just got the i's crossed, the t's kind of items in general, so.
We'll work through it.
Going back to condition three, if you want to get rid of the words where after copies of all unit owner association bylaws, CCRs, fine, because I think we've got it in there that, you know, we didn't know what form it would take, but we've got the, you know, an easement that spells out the maintenance use, shared parking, that's really all we're looking for.
If those are the private-related items, and the plat has all the utilities, stormwater and all that, that'll be on the plat for public-related items. So, from that standpoint, we're covered.
Up to the first comma.
Yep, just, yes. Yeah, just copies of easements and other documents for shared access parking use and maintenance of common facilities. Yeah.
Okay, very good. Okay. Any other questions for the applicants? No. Commissioners?
Great, thank you.
All right, we're ready for a motion with the modified conditions.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Planning Commission approve the consolidation replat of the properties owned by CAM Development at 1100 High Street, subject to the four staff conditions as modified here tonight.
Second.
You've heard the motion, the second. Heard the official comments. Now, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. All right, moving on, the next item is a public hearing. Was proposed zoning text amendment establishing a transitional mixed-use zoning district text. Mr. Kaiser?
Okay, as we discussed last week, the purpose was to create mixed-use zoning for areas that are kind of transition or located between, you know, in an area where we're moving from residential to commercial or vice versa. Originally, it was thought that this would really apply only to the C1 and C3 districts that surround downtown to the north, south, and east. But looking at it further, there were some other areas in the city where we think it might apply, and I think I attached those maps in your staff report. So, the wording changed a little bit, and some of the potential areas that would be mapped in the future may change a bit as well, particularly when it comes to the areas north of downtown. Again, not far from here, we have the old site that was, I believe, AMP, Young Fellow Drugs, Save-A-Lot, number of things through the year, and the Plaza to its north. Those really were built kind of in the 1950s area. They kind of are a C1-style development. They probably should be excluded from this area. So, we would have to tweak the map a little bit as we look to apply this. But for right now, I think we're at a position where we can review the zoning text itself and then determine what the boundary should be and where this could be applied. So, again, briefly, the intent would be to apply some areas that are pretty much primarily residential in nature. They've been virtually been built out by the 1960s, and they're in close proximity to other non-residential uses or zoning districts. And again, the provisions would allow residential structures to be converted to accommodate small-scale commercial uses and businesses. And again, with few exceptions, most of the city zoning districts are single-use residential or single-use commercial, and they do present problems when structures within those zones were built, say, for one purpose and converted to another, and then you can't go back and forth. But there are areas where it might make sense that, hey, the, you know, for instance, downtown's expanding, we need a place to, you know, add more shops or a coffee shop or a small-scale restaurant. Some of the older homes might be good for that. You know, maybe they're, the market for single-family homes around downtown is dying out. That can be converted. Vice versa, if things change in the future and all of a sudden it becomes less valuable as commercial property and someone wants to buy it and convert it back to a home to live in, that can be done with this, with this mixed-use zoning. It helps eliminate, you know, a lot of the problems that do exist when you only allow a certain, one certain type of use. So, again, I think some of the key provisions of the text are that it does permit and protects the existing residential uses, especially in the area around downtown, which are predominantly residential in nature. Moving to another area where it could apply, which is the south end, that's also kind of a mixed, a mixed bag. You know, we've got some, some existing dwellings that could be converted, a lot of smaller-scale commercial and retail restaurant-type uses in the frontage area. So, again, I think in areas like these, sometime, like these two, some type of mixed-use zoning is probably more appropriate than a single use. So, again, we protect commercial uses, but we allow for the conversion of them to compatible small-scale uses. We've included some restrictions on lot sizes and square footage of the non-residential uses to prevent them from becoming too large and therefore having a, you know, having a really large impact on the vicinity. So, I think we've capped the non-residential uses to about 3,500 square feet. And in terms of the land area, we prohibit any consolidations, I believe, that would create new lots more than 22,000 square feet, which is about half an acre. And that would help keep someone from taking advantage of these and putting in a large-scale commercial use that requires a lot of parking, because that could have a really bad impact here on downtown and also on the south end, which, trying to work with the folks to redevelop. It does require off-street parking, but it does allow for reductions for non-residential uses when there are parking lots and other off-street parking agreements with other properties in the vicinity. Still require any residential use to maintain the required parking, which is two spaces for dwelling unit. And I think that helps control how much of a conversion could take place. So, you couldn't take a single-family home and convert it into a 10-unit apartment unless that lot was big enough to accommodate 20 vehicles. There's not many of those there. So, again, the thought was residential's fine, you have So again, the thought was residential's fine, you have a single-family home, can you divide it, meet building codes and get two units? That's fine, as long as you can get the four, four parking spaces on it. So I think that keeping those parking restrictions are going, our requirements are going to be the self-limiting factor on how, how much residential you're gonna get. But I think mostly it's, it's really more responsive and flexible to changing market conditions. Again, one of the drivers was a structure built as a home, now it's in the C1 district. Apparently, there's no market for the, for retail at this point in time, but it's all set up as a single-family home, but zoning won't allow it to be changed because it's in a C1 district. So rather than look at a piecemeal or a spot zoning, you know, one property at a time, let's look at how to do this on a, kind of a neighborhood basis. So those, that's the intent of the provisions, and I've attached the actual proposed text. So if there's any, any questions about any of that before, before we declare the public hearing open?
Any questions for Mr. Kaiser at this point? If not, I'd like to open the public hearing. There is no one in the audience, so I will close the public hearing. You have another, another area that crossed my mind was the intersection of High Street and Akron Road or 261. There's kind of a mix-ish of stuff up there.
I thought about that one, too.
Fair amount of retail, but some surrounding, there's some apartments and some single-family homes, so that may be another area.
Yeah. This, this list certainly wasn't all inclusive. It was just, just thinking about it, what came to mind, you know, immediately. So there are, there are some, some things that we want to consider. I've also, the other issue is in terms of zoning amendments and property notifications. I've got Mr. Proudfoot looking at our zoning requirements as well as the Ohio Revised Code, because as discussed, or I think I mentioned to either the committee or some of you individually, Ohio Revised Code requires the legislative authority to notify property owners when there's a zoning amendment, and that zoning amendment affects 10 or less properties. Why? Because it's typically a small-scale zoning and you can notify a handful of properties. Anything above that's really kind of a wholesale change, and the notification process could be quite onerous. And so he's looking at that because our zoning code says, well, the commission's gotta notify everyone that's being, you know, rezoned, but the city council doesn't have to, and they're the ones who actually make the final recommendation. So he's looking at that and going to suggest whether or not we should amend our zoning regulations to basically mirror what the Ohio Revised Code requires for cities and city councils. So that may be coming our way, too.
Okay. Well, should we recommend this and forward it to council for consideration?
I think, if you're okay with it, I think you should, because again, in the past, we've, we even have, we still have the state zoning district on the books, although we don't have any areas mapped. So I would forward this so they can take a look at it. They've already seen it in public, or, excuse me, Planning and Economic Development Committee, haven't heard much feedback, but I'd like to keep this going. And then round two is, let's look at the map, tweak the map and come back with specific recommendations on where this should be applied.
And if council had some serious considerations or concerns, they could push it back here?
They could.
Through the planning commission for further, further review?
For the text?
Yeah, for the text.
Yeah, I think they could, yes.
So that's, that's part of, part of the process. Okay.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, I see this as a useful tool in allowing formerly residential properties that have been occupied by a commercial enterprise to be sold as a future residence, so that they can revert to their original purpose.
Okay, so are we ready for a motion to forward this to council with our recommendation or their consideration?
Mr. Chairman, I move that the planning commission forward to city council a recommendation to adopt a transitional mixed-use district, language that could be applied to areas around our central business district that are currently zoned C1 or C3, as well as additional areas that might come to their attention.
Second.
Heard the motion of the second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Okay. We're closing in on it. The last item is a discussion item, a draft, updates to the planned unit development, TUD, regulations and potential residential planned unit development, PUD, on Hartman Road. Mr. Kaiser?
Okay. Couple reasons for this quick discussion. One is to introduce some potential wholesale changes to the planned unit development zoning regulations, and also to talk about a potential PUD development on property that is currently being considered for annexation. And I'm gonna start with the easy one first, which is the PUD regulations themselves. I think it's become clear over the years that our current regulations really aren't functioning the way they were envisioned. They haven't really resulted in the types of development we thought we would be getting. Some of the problems, I think, are a result of the way the P, the regulations themselves are drafted, others just kind of the nature of PUD and where they're located. You know, so for instance, as I've mentioned before, the PUD regulations as they now exist aren't a true planned unit development. They're more of an overlay. The way the code's written, it says if your property is zoned LDR, R1 or R2, you can develop under a PUD style, but it doesn't really change the underlying uses, tweaks a little bit some of the lot sizes and setbacks, but doesn't really do a whole lot. So it's really, if you own a property that's zoned R1, you can develop it under a standard subdivision or through the PUD overlay. A true planned unit development functions, it's got several functions. One, it's a, you know, a general concept plan of how it's gonna be developed, but it also results in a new zoning text and zoning map for the properties that are part of that PUD. So you would, you would change the underlying zoning of the property and say, this is the ABC planned unit development, and these are the proposed uses, these are the proposed setbacks. They would change, they would not be standardized. They would be negotiated for each PUD. Each PUD would still have those elements, but they might, might differ. Planned unit development also includes a general development plan that shows how the streets are gonna be laid out, where the housing units or lots are gonna be, if it contains any non-residential uses, where those would be located. So that's what a PUD should do, and it does work best in fast-growing communities because really they function as master plans for areas of the city. Not the city itself, but an area that's bigger than one site, but, you know, comprises many acres. And I think what I've seen in the past is, they really work well in communities where someone plans to develop 500 to 1,000 dwelling units in a short period of time, in two to three years, and along with those units, they want to build in some non-residential functions to serve those folks. That's really not been the case with, with Watson. We're not growing that fast, but I think there are some, some reasons we ought to have the, the PUDs in place. I think Briarthorn, when it was originally approved, had about 200 units, and that's the biggest PUD we've had. And those units have gone down, and the commercial components have actually gone away. So they're really what's called a planned residential development. It's kind of a subset of the, of a PUD. In itself, not bad, but I think our regulations need to be better written and for allow, that allows these things to, to occur. So what we've done is given you a draft text of what's being proposed. Two main sections. One are the PUD requirements, and then there is a whole section on the process for getting the PUD approved and what's involved. So I don't think I've got my text with me. I've got it here on the plane. So again, like any zoning district, calls out the purpose and objectives, what's the intent and purpose, and really in determining what, what should go in a planned unit development, what types of uses, what the density should be, one of the items that we look, we're gonna be looking at is, what's, what does a comp plan call for this area? I think this can be used especially in areas that are growing quickly, like up at Great Oaken High in the North High area, where you've got some centralized commercial uses, you've got low-density residential out in the township. What should go in there, you know, to kind of bridge that, that gap? So I would just suggest maybe you look these over and see if you have any, any issues. We also have problems with residential uses, and single-family dwellings, condominiums versus freestanding lots and cluster lots. I wanna kind of get away from all that, because to me, a single-family dwelling is a single-family dwelling. How it's owned is a different matter altogether. But I know, you know, when we talk about the market impacts of land use regulations, I know from talking to several people that banks are a little hesitant to loan money on condos anymore. We still allow them. Banks are hesitant to lend money because they don't have a lot of collateral, because in the condo, you're really buying airspace. That's why we've seen some things, you know, the cluster lots or what's called freehold condominiums, where you're not only buying the airspace of a unit, you're actually buying the land on which that building sits. So banks have some collateral and it affects loan rates and the ability to get financing. So that's kind of the, the trigger for some of these changes. And moves us into the second part of the discussion is the...
Mr. Kaiser, real quick, before you go into that second, I just had a question as far as application. So you'd mentioned, and I'm aware that, how it is now with our PUDs, that, as you said, it's almost like a overlay district. With this, if it's not utilized kind of as a overlay district, would this be more anticipated? Obviously, when we have new annexations coming in, it would be, would it be designated as, if a, through a pre-annexation agreement, for example?
Yes, it could be.
Or, but what about, I mean, we have fewer opportunity for existing areas, but there could be some existing areas. How would that be handled, like an existing property, let's say that they wanted to utilize?
In the city itself?
Huh?
You mean, an existing property in the si, same way? They'd come to us and say, we own these 50 acres over here. We're in an R1 district. We would like to develop, we would like to change it to a PUD, and here, here are the uses, and they would do it the same way.
And that's just through like a planning, like a, the planning versus it's not a zoning?
It's both. It's, yeah.
So they would have to go through like a zoning?
Yes, it would follow, in the text, I think we start here on section 154037. It talks about the PUD review and approval process. So it would follow the same steps, whether it's property in the township that's gonna be annexed, or it's property in the city that's not been developed. Like for instance, what would, the case we had earlier, the C creekside commons. If these regulations were in place, they would go through, they would have gone through this process. They could have come up with the exact same product, the exact same layout, but instead of being an R1 PUD, it would become creekside commons planned unit development. It would show up on the zoning map as creekside commons PUD, and there would be a new text added to the code that's specified.
So they would either, you know, develop as a regular subdivision, or they would have to go through a process to, you know, because if they wanted to do this?
This is a whole, this, yeah, this process is, it does create a new zoning district. It does create a new zoning district.
So existing, if they want to take advantage of this, they'd have to go through a zone, the typical process of changing zone?
If they wanted to just, if they want, didn't want to do this, they could develop as a standard subdivision.
Standard subdivision.
Yeah.
Gotcha.
Whether it's in the city or township. Okay. But typically, if someone's coming into the city and they've got an idea, they will come in and say, yeah, I'd like to avail myself of the PUD regulations and create this, because otherwise, we'd have to have three or four different zoning classifications applying.
And that would go through the pre-annexation agreement and that sort of thing.
Right.
No, I was mainly interested in the process for, you know, somebody that, a property that's existing here.
Yeah. And again, again, this is, this is certainly optional. Anyone who owns property now or wants to annex could develop through a standard subdivision and say, hey, I just want to zone this R1 and create just single-family lots. Okay. Any, any other questions?
Is there a timetable on this?
Now, I'd like to get it done as soon as possible, because that brings us to our second issue, which is what you see here. The, this is advanced property, most of it is. This block right here to the west is actually already in the city, okay? But we have a developer who's interested in both pieces, and they would like to do what they're calling a, a, a PUD, consists of a couple, you know, two, really just two different types of residential properties. One are free, free, one are fee simple lots that are basically surrounded by some open space. The other two areas are townhouse lots, okay, which currently aren't really clear on how those you develop in the city, you know? Are they multifamily, are they, you know? I look at townhouses as being attached to single-family, because if you can own one unit and not the whole block, then it's single-family, which just happens to be attached. So we've gotta add some clarification to our code to allow that. But what's kind of the driving force behind a lot of this is the whole annexation process, which starts at the county commissioner's office and gets transferred down to the city council. Council's now interested in, well, if we annex this land, what's gonna, what's gonna happen? Well, normally, you don't know what's gonna happen until the city assigns some kind of zoning to it, and then whatever zoning district it's given, you can develop it according to whatever that particular district allows. So they're, they're taking a little bit of a different approach. It says, well, we want to have a pre-annexation developer, agreement with the developer that says, if we annex in, this is kind of the product that we're going to get, okay? That may not be 100% accurate, but we know that we're gonna get some kind of layout that looks like this. So then the problem becomes, okay, well then how do we make this happen? Because Ohio Revised Code is clear, and statutory cities, planning commission has a role in establishing what, what zoning goes, goes into place. So I think the development pre-annexation agreement can take you so far, but ultimately, planning commission has to be into this, this process and discussion. That's one of the reasons we're bringing this up now, just to make you aware of this. As we're working on developing the, the process, I wanted to let you, you know, let everyone know that in the future, you may have a more formal role once we get notice of an annexation. So anyhow, I'm bringing this up as, this is what's being proposed, and our proposed PUD regulations, at least the requirements such in, what do we want in a PUD, what types of uses, what types of setbacks, what type of density, are sort of being driven by, by this. this development. So what council has wanted to see in their pre-annexation development agreement is kind of what we want to put in the zoning code as, if you're applying for a PUD, here are the things that we want to see. So that once the ball gets rolling, council has decided that, okay, the, the annexation petition has been approved by county commissioners, and we now have 120 days to act on it, we can jump in kind of immediately and say, hey, none of our existing single-family zones really work to make this, let's, let's go down the PUD route. Does any of that make any sense? Because I know it's, there's, there's a lot there.
Yes, there is.
We've got a lot of moving parts, and we're trying to tie them together.
If that property in today's world was zoned R1, would it meet the density requirements for its needed?
No, it wouldn't meet the density requirements. I think they're proposing about six units an acre, which is what our comp plan says is, is fairly appropriate. But given our zoning, you know, here's the problem, to meet that density, we'd have to rezone it to R3 or R4, which then allows for other uses that we may not want. That's why I think a PUD along with a development agreement is, is a good approach. But let's assume, let's assume that density was fine, it's the same density as in a R1 district. The problem is, you'd still need variances, because we don't allow for townhouses, we don't allow for attached single-family dwellings. Maybe we don't want that all over the board, and that's why I think these types of things ought to be in a planned unit development. What I'm, I'm going to suggest, I'm going to talk to Mr. Morris, who's, who's working with council on, kind of working up the pre-annexation requirements and what's, what's in that. But we may want to have a work session with either just the county, with just the planning commission, or even open it up with a joint work session with council, the kind of talk through this process and how do we set this up so that, one, we're checking all the boxes and we're following state law, and everyone gets a chance to look and weigh in before something's rezoned. So didn't really expect any action tonight, but I just wanted to make you aware of, one, what's going on, why, and what kind of zoning changes we're working on, we're drafting up to try and help solve this issue as we move forward.
Well, there's 11 pages of this, it'll take some digestion.
Yeah. Well, that's about, you know what, it's probably no longer than what our current PUD regulations are.
Really?
Now, there's some, looking at other communities' codes as drafting this, some of them were a lot shorter, but that's because some of this, the requirements, some of the specifics that we have, they say, refer to this chapter, refer to this chapter. Well, we don't. I've tried to keep it all in one, one section, so people don't have to keep flipping back and forth. If I took all that out and said, refer to this, that, it would be shorter, but people have to be looking in different places.
I agree with that.
I just all want to get it in one place, so people know what they're looking at.
Okay, so we should just keep this on our agenda?
Yeah, we'll just keep it there as, kind of in the background, I'll, I'll talk with Mr. Morris and see if we can do something to, to kind of get everyone on the same page and-
Work session with, oh, work session possibly with-
Yeah. And I'll, I'll get his input to see whether he thinks it might, he guessed-
We'll let you take the lead on that one, what do you think is the best way to handle that?
Yeah. We'll see, if we want to get both parties together, just do one for you, and then later one with, with council.
That's all that was on our agenda this evening. Mr. Kaiser, is there anything else this evening?
No, that, that should do it, so we are meeting the 24th, 6 o'clock, with one public hearing so far.
Yep. Okay. All right. Do the commissioners have anything else they would like to bring up this evening? Hearing none, is your motion to adjourn?
So moved.
We are adjourned.